That motion to approve signed amendments of the April 21st, 2025.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number six, approve blank purchase order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number seven, audit and allow purchase orders for payment, title for payment on April 30th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Is there any you can tell me from this?
Mr. Corning.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number nine, board discussion possible action to approve quote for brickwork by emergency management building.
I only got three here. I got about fifty-five hundred. Seven hundred. They counted it. Do you have a different time? I'll make a motion to go a little bit of B.C. construction.
Got it. Second.
Second.
Motion made. Second, award B.C. construction. Roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Second. Do you need to follow you, I guess?
Yes. All right. Yes. Item number ten, board discussion possible action to award signed the following six month bid contracts, 2717 for food, the CBI Foods number 2027854, and Benny Key Foods 028, or 027853.
Just did it. Oh, you're just doing it.
Yes.
Item number B, 2518 tires, Goodyear Tire and Road Company, 027856, and Southern Tire Mark LLC, 027857. 2519 oil lubricants, banana free, weed fuel LLC, number 027858. And D, 2520 road oil, carbon, asphalt, motions, 027859, Light Asphalt Products Company, 0278663, Vance Brothers Incorporated, 027862, Coastal Energy Corporation, 027860, Asphalt Fuel and Supply LLC, 02786. Have a second.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, to sign all contract. Roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number eleven, board discussion possible action to open the following six month bids, State Spec Asphalt, number 2521.
Second.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. I have one bid from Apex Central Incorporated. I have a bid from Tulsa Asphalt. I have one bid from Cowboy Asphalt. I have one bid from Bison Materials. I have one bid from Loping County Asphalt.
Make a motion to tabulate.
Do we have a motion to accept in all bids and tabulate?
Make a motion to accept all bids and tabulate.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twelve, board discussion possible action to open the following 12 months bid, 22, or 2522 road blank signs, and 2523 election ballots. Uh, was that right?
Oh, you're fine.
Let's just do 2522, then we'll come back to the election.
Roll that one. That one.
I have one bid from American Traffic Safety Securities Incorporated. I have one bid from Sign Solutions USA LLC. That was worth it there. I have one bid from Vulcan Alumna. And item number B, 2523 election ballots. Oh, do I have to make a motion on 2522 to accept? I'll be, sorry, basic. I have a motion to accept.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, accept all bids and tabulation. Roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes.
Not only am I appealing to him, but others not me.
I have one bid from Rural Framing Company.
I'm an extra. You got my open next.
I'll have a little bit.
Huh? Just thought I'd call in a little bit. Ain't nothing in it.
I have one bid from Midwest Framing Company. Do I have a motion to accept all bids and tabulation?
I'll make a motion to accept all bids and tabulation.
Roll call, Mr., uh, to your second one?
I'll say it.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number thirteen, acknowledged letter from nutrition stating requisition officers for county commissioners, our county commissioners, Anthony Hudson, Steve Coward, and Charlie Cartwright, and Dee Cowardson, director and proceeding agent for the remainder of the fiscal year 25. At Central Office has Barclay and Gay Kendrick, Cedar Ridge, Jennifer Hunt, Lorraine Wendy, Hominy, Laura Dawkins, and Pauline Hudson, Shider, Beauty Davis, and Gay Hendricks, Skydoo Sikes, Daley Atkins, and Laura Dawkins. Item fourteen, acknowledged invoice from Adler Associate, Adler Architects in the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred one sixty for OCS County Corrigs. Item number fifteen, board discussion possible action to approve sign in state Oklahoma for transfer day and county action report for verification of Newton County roads beginning in grid north, 39177, end grid north, 39200, east off Norwood Lombard Lane, and north of West 154th Place North.
Out of the mileage, sending King Kirk McComber.
It's a removal. They, they don't have that as a, as a county road, and it is not. So I'm removing it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number sixteen, payment bond proceeds to the following, Higgins Construction Management invoice number one, 333, for eleven thousand dollars, D, Robert Davis for storage, invoice number five, 2025, one thousand dollars. Item number seventeen, acknowledged notification transfer, or two board transfer of lapse funds to fiscal year 2425. Cash funds from 2223 for three hundred ninety dollars, cash funds from 2223 of five thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. And cash funds for over fiscal year 2324 in the amount of eighteen thousand fifty-one thirty-five.
These are funds that have been remaining after the year's end, uh, when everything's cleared and balanced. These were funds that were still remaining there that we found here in Mexxoma and have moved over to the front bid.
The money that should have been available that were, if I had not.
Item number eighteen, board discussion possible action to approve sign transfer for corrective action of expenditures taken from general fund, uh, 0001352004110 for nutrition to 1242352002005 during the year 2425 in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
So this is expenditures for, uh, nutrition that has been in the past that was taken out, uh, general funds that should have been taken out, or cash funds. A certain part of that is reimbursed by Title III. So it's just moving the, from to the correct account that they should be extended from.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number nineteen, board discussion possible action to approve sign transfer for correction and transfer error in the amount of three thousand one hundred dollars from 1102642002065, property insurance to 1102642002005 MNO transfer error discovered during record concealment.
This is, this is actually a critical error in transferring the cash funds that are from the monthly receipts to highway, and this is just fragmentary in the correct account that goes into.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty, board discussion possible action to approve sign transfer for nutrition in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars from 124235200205, senior citizens MNO to the following camps, salaries for thirty-three thousand, FICA for two thousand, retirement for three thousand, and insurance for six thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty-one, board discussion possible action to approve sign transfer for county clerk in the amount of five thousand dollars from 0011001110031310 per travel.
Second.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Cartwright, yes.
Item number twenty-two, board discussion possible action to approve sign transfer for fairgrounds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from salaries to MNO.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty-three, board discussion possible action to approve sign cash trans, or cash fund estimate in needs for the town of Osage in the amount of one thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Motion's made. Second, roll call, Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item, item number twenty-four. Board discussion possible action to approve sign contract for health department with Mike Cole, the E.A. Cole Long. Mike Cole, DEA Cole Lawn Service for Mowing Engine four one 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 five East Fifteenth Street, Husko, Oklahoma for the period between July one twenty twenty-five and June thirtieth twenty twenty-six for six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty-five, board discussion possible action to approve signed contract for Health Department for Minute Major LLC, Pretentorial Services Daily, at the five p.m. Monday through Friday, excluding holidays, for the health facility located in eleven fifteen East Fifteenth, Husko, Oklahoma for twelve hundred dollars a month for the month, or month for the period between July one twenty twenty-five and June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
She is.
This was a minutes communication and it should not have been put on the agenda. The agreement's been sent, but we have not received it.
You have a motion to table until, apparently, motion taken until prepared. Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty-six, board discussion possible action to approve and sign contract for Health Department, Hominy Family Medical Center for Radiology Services to patients for perpetuity by the Osage County Health Department for maximum contract total of twenty-five hundred dollars for the period between July one twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty-seven, board discussion possible action to approve and sign. Board discussion possible action to approve and sign contract for Health Department with Rural Wellness Fairfax to provide two view PA and lateral chest x-rays at the rate of one hundred dollars, single view x-ray and a hundred and fifty dollars, two view x-ray for the period between July one twenty twenty-five and June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to table item twenty-seven.
Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Cartwright, yes.
Item number twenty-eight, board discussion possible action to approve purchasing building in Fairfax for nutrition.
Morning. I'm here today to talk to you about a need for a nutrition facility in Fairfax. We have been working over there for the past year. We've been preparing our meals in Shider, at our senior site there, and delivering the meals to Fairfax. We deliver approximately twenty meals to homebound people, and twenty to twenty-five congregant people come up to a church that we have to pick us the meals together. I have researched different options for sites in Fairfax. I've looked at six different sites. Two I have found that would meet our needs for a nutrition site. One is a, is an already standing building, and one is some lots owned by the city that we could possibly go and new site. So that's why I'm here today to talk about that. I have provided you with all of the properties that I have researched, and.
What are we supposed to do with this? Do we, do we do the follow-up, or do you do the follow-up?
Well, I just need to know what my next step is. Do, I can visit a building that's for sale.
I personally don't think we need to take a step, being the elected official from that community, their ideas are totally different than this, and I was elected by the constituents there, I live in that camp, I communicate well with my constituents, that's not what they want. And I think I need to try to deliver how constituents are looking forward to it. If I can't do it, then we may have to do other options, but this time I don't think I'm.
They're not, what are they wanting? Are they not wanting to have a site?
We, we can discuss that privately, because it's a negotiating thing right now. If you would like to touch base with me, I would be happy to discuss with you. Not a problem with that. But at this time, I don't think we need to even start looking to buy a property, because I've got to go out and look at it, so it's time to come here.
I'd like.
One thing that I had a question on was, whenever you and I talked the last time, you were talking about somebody donating land and being able to put up a new building, and we had discussed that, and you were going to look at the costs and the options and all of that, and what happened with that. Because what I see is if we buy a building, an old building, then it's going to be for two hundred and seventy-four thousand, then we're going to end up putting, you know, no telling how much, and it's bringing up the standards, plus getting all of the equipment and everything else, which is going to be a substantial amount compared to possibly what it would cost to put up a, a building in.
Well, my second, my first option was a building that's already there. My section, second option was a parcel of land that is owned by the city of Fairfax. I talked to the mayor last week, and she said they might be willing to donate twelve lots for us to build a new building, and they're going to talk about that in a morning tomorrow.
Well, let's, let's, I mean, this is a good place to start to, to, you know, we're trying to do something, you know, out there, but I would think that we probably need to look more into all of our options before we start trying to make a plan on where to go from here.
I need to listen to my constituents.
This has been dragging on for a while, though, we need to do something about it.
Exactly.
And there's a reason why, I believe, so this shouldn't have been settled last October, but it didn't get done. So I think some moves.
I need you for, for you to do this, and we'll, we'll keep watch, you know, where it goes from here, and we'll, we'll be looking into, you know, what the options are, and I'll make a motion for, for action.
I'll say it. Roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty-nine, board discussion possible action to open public hearing for section line, opening request from Kate Lynn Owens for section thirty-four, TBW at twenty-two North Range in East, and section three, TBW, TWP, twenty-one North and Range in East. I'd like to open this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll say it.
Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Due to unforeseen circumstances, I'd like to make a motion to reset this hearing for May tenth, or May fifth at ten a.m. That was a motion.
Is that, is that a recess or a reset?
That's a reset of the hearing.
If you reset, you have to renotice. If you recess, you don't. You take a recess, you can.
Oh, we, I'm sorry, I thought you said, this, we need a reset.
Yes.
Okay. I'd make, I, my motion would be that we make a reset. Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number twenty-nine, board discussion possible action regarding change order on the Annex Building. Dalton.
Yep. So we've got a current change order right now, involves several things. We've got additional data drops, there's fifteen points for data drops for the DA's office that they have to have that and phone lines separate to meet state regulations. So we have to add fifteen additional data points to that office. The cost for that work is sixteen thousand forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, and we are, we have to add security station up front, since we kind of got rid of the connector between the two buildings. So that security station, we have to change some of the storefront glasswork up front, some of the storefront glass inside. We've added a kind of little desk and station for the security office there, some bulk brick glass, data power, all those good things. The security station change total is thirty-one thousand and twenty-five dollars, and for all the labor fees and administration for those change orders is eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents, and the total change order is fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. All we're approving is to use the funds that are all already allocated for the Annex Project. We're not asking for any additional funds. This comes out of the contingency fund that was built into the project, so it's using funds that are, that are allocated for the project already.
Any discussion from the board?
No. I think we've, we've, we've. Yeah, we, I've been talking with you guys on it, and get our hands around it, and it started out with a whole lot more data drops, and we whittle that down to a reasonable amount that, that only looks necessary. We changed some casework stuff on one of the offices that got moved in there, and the security stuff up and running, it kind of is what it is, so we've skidded it up a lot, but that's, that's just what's necessary.
Do you have a motion to approve a change order?
I'll make a motion to approve a change order on the Annex Building.
Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.
Yes.
Cartwright, yes. Item number thirty-one, board discussion from the Annex Project team, AIP, KSB, and Higgins Construction.
Okay. So we brought the project team in here, Jake just took the phone call and stepped out, but just want to kind of introduce them and give names and faces, you guys have probably met them or seen them, but wanted to bring them in here and kind of get a quick update and rundown of where we're at, what's going on, what to expect over the next few months. I'll bring Brandon up and Matt up. So Brandon Curtis is the project manager for KSB, for the construction guys, and Matt Graves is partner for AIP Architects in partnership there at Norman, and he designed the project for us, and this is the project team. Jake Fisher back here, he's the on-site superintendent, so he's, he's the one that really works out of, out of all of us up here that makes everything happen, so. I'll let Brandon kind of hit, touch on budget, where we're at, and mention.
Right now, currently, I mean, we're completely on budget, we're still under the initial budget where we were, have plenty of other, other contingencies, we don't have any foreseeable concerns in the future. This was the biggest foreseeable thing that we had, this is our security station. It arose when Sheriff, when we removed the whole Annex Connection building, we didn't have a secure point for anybody to be able to come in, to check in, to walk through a metal detector or anything, so we had to add all that stuff in for that building to be secure. That's where that came from. Right now, the building itself, we're fully sheetrocked. By the end of this coming month, this upcoming month, we should be fully finished on the exterior of the building. Our substantial completion date right now, it's August twelfth. That has been pushed back slightly, about two months due to that car net system, the mobile shelving storage system that had been added in. That delivery date is at the end of, end of July, so that'll go in at the beginning of August, so we're projecting August twelfth as our substantial. Where we stand on it.
Matt, you getting the man?
No, thanks for having us back. Been going on for quite a while, twenty years since progress for a while, the building exterior is taking shape, see what's going to look like, like the existing house, should take a walk inside to see what we're, Jake, yes.
There will be at least one more additional change order, like, like Brandon mentioned, for the mobile shelving unit. We've got the one for the clerk's office, that's already in, that is in. We need shelving for N's office, for the assistant's office. So we, we have it priced out, ready to change order in. It doesn't require, been out of it, require any of that, it's underneath the price bracket, so we will have, we'll see additional change to get that, and again, that's both in the contingency, it's all within the project funds, not compromising budget, not compromising. We did lose a little bit of time on schedule, but other than that, we're, we're in good shape. Should be, should be proud, building that everybody will be proud of at the end of the day, so. You guys got any questions?
No, thank you guys. I know it's kind of hanging on there.
In books.
We will see you later.
Thank you, guys.
Item number thirty-two, there any citizens input? Any citizens input, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is made in section, roll call, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin.